CB Commercial District, as well as potentially in the Gateway Plan Development District. Two, the Planning Commission recommends that the Zoning Commission consider editing the proposed definition to remove the permission of the sale of alcoholic liquor in this venue. Three, the Planning Commission values the town's longstanding policy of serving alcohol with food and establishments permitted to do so, and recommends that the Zoning Commission consider an additional control, perhaps limiting the amount of beverage served per person to some quantity consistent with practices in other similar facilities in the state. Perhaps thirty-two ounces would be considered. Four, the Planning Commission recommends that the Zoning Commission consider the brew pub regulation for inclusion in the special permit use, section eleven point two, of the Light Industrial District.
Thank you Frank. That was great, I just wanted to comb through it. There was some language about mixed use.
Yeah.
Could we strike the residential part and leave it mixed use?
Yeah, just to end that, the applicable portions.
Yeah, and Mr. Gageal is that consistent? There's no residential in the LI.
Right.
Correct.
Except affordable housing?
Except for affordable, well, what once was zoned LI at Sea Spray is now zoned Affordable Housing District.
Okay.
I would note that adjacent to the Light Industrial, we have an R-ten zone. We also have an R-forty out at the Capitol, Capitol Drive, Colton Road area. Whereas the area closer to the center of Flanders, you have Gate, well, State Highway, the Gateway Plan Development District, to the northwest and to the northeast, we have Commercial, and RU forty to the south. And those, you know, noting that the current use to the land in the south is the municipal, it's the middle school, followed by the community center and Lily B. Haynes School. So, the nearest residential development would be, I think it's Heritage, or, sorry, that...
Well, and I'd like, I'd like to...
Hopkins Drive.
Frank, I would like to add the comment, um, how many numbers were there?
Uh, come on.
Four, four, I'd like to add five, uh, um, compatibility with affordable housing, adult use, and brew pubs. And see if zoning can paint that picture.
See, we want to add compati... Okay, well, we have not had a second?
Well, I have to amend my motion, but I'm just gonna see if I have distilled his thoughts. And we'll see if we can catch other thoughts, too, we could do it all in one.
Yeah, I don't think you have to repeat the motion from the top, right? We're just, you just say as amended.
No, I would just amend it with item five.
Yeah, he would say amended, I mean, but if you're gonna add more, you could say the motion fails and then...
Does anybody want to make a number six comment of any?
Normally, you would have it seconded and then have this discussion, and then amend the motion.
Oh, we didn't get a second?
There was no second.
Very good.
So now you'd normally have this discussion after the second, amend the motion.
Should I repeat myself?
I think I called it, and now we have a protocol established. But before I go to amending a motion, I think I want to capture yours correctly. The Zoning Commission, number five, we might add, the Zoning Commission should consider the compatibility of this change with other uses in the special use designation category such as, I said, nursing homes. Did you put health spas in there? But you were listing ones that already exist.
Yeah, I wanted to list the three unusual uses in the Light Industrial, which is the affordable housing, the adult use, and now brew pub.
Affordable housing.
Adult use establishment.
The entire adult use establishments, yes, I see it, I see it. So, subject to other things, I would, uh... An item five might read, "Zoning Commission should consider the compatibility of this change with other special uses such as affordable housing and adult use establishments." Further discussion?
Yeah, I'll just make, I just want to make a comment. In my tenure here, one of the first things we did was allow alcohol in hotels in town. So, you know, I'm observing a trend of alcohol being brought more and more into, um...
Establishments.
Yeah, the whole town. So, um, I think it, I think our motion reflects a cautious tone towards, um, putting the puzzle pieces in place for really a really different kind of neighborhood in Light Industrial. You know, people don't typically go at ten PM to Light Industrial to get a beer. Till now.
But they do the workout.
Yeah.
Yeah. Naturally.
So, I kind of changed it, listening to that, um, that the Zoning Commission should consider the compatibility and potential impact of this change upon other special uses in the Light Industrial Zone, specifically affordable housing, such as affordable housing and adult use establishments. I think that's better. More captures the concern.
Very good. So, we have a motion, Ernie seconded it?
Yeah.
Yes.
How do we feel? Further discussion?
Unless we had further about the, um, you know, I went on that rambling, I read the entire policy statement out of the POCD, only a small portion of which applied, and I probably could've just stated objective two point two, which was to support and cultivate a wide variety of economic activities that can be easily integrated into the community with little or no adverse impact. But I think it stands alone in the document, even with the ramblings where it kind of diverged a little about into the residential area, so I think it is clean as read.
Yeah, I would just...
That is the POCD. Sorry, Mr. Gageal?
No, never mind, I'm just reading that, I'm good.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Further discussion?
I'd like to amend my motion, adding comment five. That the Zoning Commission should consider the compatibility and potential impact of this change upon other special uses in the Light Industrial Zone, such as affordable housing and adult use establishments.
And Ernie, do you amend your second?
I amend my second as amended.
Further discussion? Well, listen, Paris, say aye.
Aye.
Close, abstention, six zero zero. Thank you, everybody, for bearing down on that one. And that was a speedy punt to zoning in time for their decision. Let's try to cruise through the agenda, it's nine twenty, uh, we have...
Where are we?
Back to the agenda, I know we're swamping around on me now.
We have municipal referrals, we have none.
And...
Back to the agenda, I couldn't find it.
So, if you pick up on the old...
Planet Conservation Development, uh, I'd say we...
We could punt that to the next meeting.
Status of subdivisions, punt, nothing pressing.
Nothing pressing.
New business, East Lime subdivision regulation, proposed changes, section nine assurances for completion and maintenance of approved, of maintenance improvements, is that anything we need to discuss this evening?
No, as I, I would just comment that we did provide last meeting the draft text.
Great.
So, if you haven't had an opportunity to take a look at it, I would just encourage you to do that, and maybe we can pick this up at our next meeting.
Great. This brings us to reports, as chairman, I'm gonna pass, our ex officio Roseanne Hardy. Thank you for staying with us.
I'm not going to pass.
Good, good, always rich.
Okay, first up, tomorrow night, town meeting. You're not off duty yet. Tomorrow night, see you at the town meeting. Four items, special appropriation to approve the baseball dugouts, that will come in at twenty-six thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. Those are, um, they have, that's a pretty firm bid that they have on it, they'd be able to do that, they feel very confident with that amount of money. Special appropriation, which includes, which is a grant, which is pretty exciting, actually, it's from Deep Recreational Trails. The trail will start at the Darrow property, and within two years, you should be able to, should you choose, walk, bike, hike, jog, all the way to Hartford.
Amazing.
Leaving Darrow.
Wow.
So, this is really a great grant, forty-nine thousand dollars coming into the town. You'd go from, you'd begin at, you could begin at Darrow, I assume, as opposed to driving to Hartford and then having to run back. You'd start at Darrow and then proceed, we have a rite of passage through the Yale property, which I thank Art Carlson particularly for working very hard on that, along with Mr. Gary Gageal, to get permits to pass through that property, something that has not happened for many, many years, and connect with the Eight Mile River Trail, and...
So, from Eight Mile River, shortly they'll secure some easements heading north from, right now, we got Twelve Mile secured out to Route eighty-two in Devil's Hop Yard. From there, going north, within short time, they'll secure those easements, and you'll be able to get to Route sixteen and the Salmon River State Forest, that's where you pick up the airline trail and get to Hartford. So, it's quite extensive for southeastern Connecticut. You'll have camping opportunities, at least within Darrow, there's a tent platform that a Boy Scouts already conducted, constructed. You know, along the way, we'll have to work with, you know, the applicable land trusts and landowners for camping opportunities, but, uh, pretty exciting.
Outstanding.
I'd suggest you begin your workouts now.
Will do.
The third item will be to fund the installation of a new system for nine-one-one calls, and that's twenty-three thousand dollars. And also, we have a grant to purchase the new boat for the Harbor Master, which we will share with Waterford, and that's ninety-eight thousand dollars, so come with your wallets.
Is that our total, ninety-eight, or each?
It's a total, we have to approve it in order to spend it.
And how much is Waterford going for?
Waterford, in this particular case, they are sharing the grant money that we, that we've funded, so this is primarily grant money for this.
I, I've observed a southeastern Connecticut Marine Patrol boat out there. Is that gonna replace this boat? What is that?
Uh, I know, the boat that this is replacing has not, I don't think that's been in the water this season.
Okay.
So, I'm not sure if that's marine, do you know, Gary?
Yeah, there's like, I said southeastern marine?
That might be through the Waterford East Lime Shellfish Commission joint.
I mean, the state police boat, the Gray Ridge Hold inflatable, it's a cold boat.
It's big.
Yeah, that's a state police boat.
Okay.
Yeah. Right, um, on the agenda for the board tomorrow night is the electronic sign for town hall. This would, this falls under zoning, again, signage, they have, they've approved this. There has been, however, some considerable public opposition to this, feeling that it doesn't really suit the town and the town's image to have a little sign board, taking away from the idea of the small village atmosphere, which many have tried to create. There's been a, there's been at least one petition circulated, they have almost a hundred signatures in opposition to this, particularly from some of the nearby neighbors, and so it'll be interesting to see what happens with this, and if people come to comment in opposition or favorable.
Yeah, if I remember correctly, there are no other signs of that type allowed in our town, this would be an exception.
No, this, there would be a similar one at the, at the high school.
Okay.
Replacing that sign. This, however, they've put strict limits on it, it will only operate for limited hours, there's no neon flashing lights, it's basically a crawl. Downtown people who do a lot of walking have expressed concerns about the location of it, a crosswalk out here, there's a lot of traffic, there's a lot of walkers, concerned about people slowing, slowing way down to read the sign instead of paying attention for pedestrians, so, there's been quite a few concerns expressed, and hopefully people will come out tomorrow night to express their opinion on that. Okay, Board of Education, well, that was Monday night's meeting. Yes, and they did get new enrollment figures, shows a total decrease of sixty-eight students, certainly not the large population decrease that people have been talking about. When you figure a loss of sixty-eight students spread over thirteen years of education, it's really negligible. Some schools, it's, they're down four students. The biggest drop is at Haynes School, which I think was, um, twenty-seven students at Haynes School. But I thought that you were more interested in the overall trend, and taking a look at perhaps the last two or three years of figures, and then projecting, particularly in light of tonight's discussion. So, I thought that this would be a good opportunity for you to meet the new superintendent of schools, I could do the report, but you see me all the time. So, I thought it'd be a nice opportunity for you to meet the new superintendent, and to have him come and present, and if you wish, he would come either to your first meeting, or if you're having the second meeting in October, he would be available to come for either one of those. My only request would be that you put him on first, as perhaps a special, special delegation, special.
I think that'd be a great idea.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, thank you for helping us.
Okay, um, so, what has, what we have seen happen, though, is in the distribution of enrollment, particularly at the high school, um, there have been a number of electives that have been added, but there really has not been an increase in staffing, and so what's happened is that the required courses are getting quite lar, are getting very large in size, they're really at maximum. So, when you look at the enrollment numbers, they really don't tell the whole story. To follow up on your concern about the number of bedrooms in the units, certainly, it was not the understanding of zoning, that was my ex officio for many years, I was there for the initial discussions when this first came in, and it was very clearly that it would be one and two bedroom condominiums, which is a very different clientele. So, I think you're wise to think about why people choose to rent apartments, and to Mr. Ballantyne's point, if you think of the rent that they're paying versus what they would pay to have their child attend the high school, for instance, that pay the tuition as an out-of-town student, it's pretty much a break even. You could afford to live here, have your child educated for four years, get an East Lime High School diploma, which has cash to it, and essentially, they've looked rent-free.
Interesting.
As opposed to if you, if you wanted to, say, live elsewhere and pay tuition for them to come here. So, as this continues to be built out, and people become more aware of this, and they do the math, you might see a difference.
You're saying our football program should be much better in the next year.
Also, I find the figures quite interesting, because I have, it has been suggested to me that I go up there at bus time and see how many students, how many children are actually getting on the bus.
Ooh.
From, some, some people have mentioned this to me, that the number is not in the neighborhood of four or eight.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that last remark.
I said, the number is not in the vicinity of four or six.
No, you have to repeat the whole thing, please.
That, uh, some people who live there have suggested that someone might come up and look and see how many children are actually getting on the bus.
Where?
At that location.
To verify at the gateway, the two-hundred-and-eighty apartments.
Oh, that's where you go.
To verify.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize, I thought you were talking about the high school, I'm sorry.
So did I.
Could that, could that number be verified through the bus company? How many children are scheduled to be picked up?
Well, I think, I think that when I talk with the superintendent and say that you're extending an invitation, I will ask him to have the bus director provide that information and present that to you.
Right.
And of course, there are also children who arrive who don't take the bus. But, I find it interesting, because I'm familiar with, with two of the students who are there, who were at the high school, and so, that one student, I happened to have a discussion with that student, knowing that they were living there, and I said, "Well, aren't you a little cramped in the apartment, because aren't there three siblings?" "Yes, well, we, we, my parents have a bedroom, and my brother has a bedroom, and we two sisters have a bedroom." So, there you have it, three bedrooms. And I think that that is something that both your commission and zoning need to inquire as to what the makeup of those additional one-hundred-and-so odd units would be.
And what is the, and what are they on the record stating it would be? Yes, yeah, a great comparison.
Go on the website, like Andrew did, and you'll see it says, "Three bedrooms," very clearly.
They're, what we found is they're advertising three bedrooms.
Mm-hmm. The elementary school project was presented again, with considerable downsizing, some of the things somewhat simple, downsizing to save money. For instance, they had planned for eight-foot wide corridors, they'll reduce those to seven feet. They've reduced the size of many of the classrooms to come in at a lower figure. That figure was not presented last night. That will be forthcoming, I would suppo, I suppose, at the next meeting. But the fact is that they were already looking at reducing the cost of that, and reducing the cost by reducing the size. I mean, the plan still is that Haynes would be closed, Flanders School, with the exception of the central office building, the historic park, that would be saved, Flanders School would be torn down, and then a completely new Flanders School. Niantic Center, that building would exist and be renovated, and then in addition, put onto that.
I was at Camp Rail the other night for the joint land use study.
Yes.
They described a chapter in the town's history I was unaware of, where for one year, students in our school system went to Camp Rail?
Yes, that was when, that was when the new middle school was being built, and Haynes School, Haynes School was being remodeled to accommodate elementary school students, and those elementary school students went to...
Is that in the mix again?
No.
Okay, so the Flanders kids will stay at Flanders until the new ones built, move, and then they'll demo?
Right, well, there'll be some shifting around, there'll be some redistricting to accommodate that.
Okay. I just want to jump in on a, on a general comment, and I want to reiterate a point made before. You mentioned that the lighting, and there's a hundred signatures about the light, you know, illuminated sign in Niantic. The boardwalk, we're now in the winter, fall-winter space before the boardwalk opens, and we, as the Planning Commission, reference community character all the time, and it's, I think it's objective one point one, it's the, um, that term has been useful, uh, it's becoming, I think, a discussion point, what is the character of Niantic, specifically Niantic, is it sleepy? I've heard sleepy thrown around, do we want sleepy? To me, there's a robust discussion that's happening, and the boardwalk will be a catalyst for change in the identity and the character of our town. I would like to see the twenty-eight departments in town hall putting their heads together to figure out what the impact on their departments will be, and in particular, the three that come to mind are senior services, park and recreation, and the police.
Well, that just so happens that that's my next topic.
I just want, not to deviate from that, but, so the Lily B., what was the plan, the fi, because they wanted to, did I hear, I don't know if I heard them correctly?
They will return that to the town.
Return, because I thought I heard, like, re-lease, I'm like, they're gonna lease it back to us?
No, no, they will return that to the town, and then the town may do as they wish, but they're already thinking that they would like to continue to use some of that, even though turning it back to the town, so I think that will result in some negotiations.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Commission on Aging, let's see, that was Monday night. Commission on Aging, they are seeing a definite increase in request for transportation, they've tried to fill that gap by having substitute drivers come in, but substitute drivers can only be effective if they have a vehicle to operate, and so they're really reaching maximum usage, as many of, shall we say, the younger elderly, which I put myself in the category of, when they moved into town, they were, and went into our first senior housing developments, Chapman Woods, they were, they were driving, you know, they were mobile, they were in their late sixties, early seventies. Now, those people have aged, and they're not driving, and we've had new senior units also added since that time. So, um, it took quite a bit of work to get the extra senior bus, so there were two buses, they're also operating a van, very soon, they're going to be, that's, they're gonna, they've outgrown that already. And, um, so I think that we have to be thinking about, um, senior projects as they come in and are presented, that, um, you know, in some cases, we have put some conditions on those developments, that they need to contribute something to the town in some way to kind of offset.
Oh, interesting, so whereas we, in the honeymoon period, were thrilled to have these active adult communities, which don't put kids in the school system and is free money, now we're coming to, we've sown, there's, this is an elderly population, and there are town services that need to be expanded to meet that.
And, so I think, and I don't think that that is, I don't think that that's, you know, a bad thing, but it's something that we need to be aware of, and need to plan for.
Certainly.
And particularly, as I hear that there's, there's another proposal potentially for another senior housing development that may be coming forward.
Go ahead.
A while ago, you had then mentioned the fact of having another senior section in the downtown part of Main Street.
Yes.
And now, listening to this, this may now be the time to think about that.
I think it's critical that the senior center take advantage of the Main Street, Boardwalk, Park stacking effect that we have in Niantic, and I just gave, I just actually just figured this out the other day, I mean, our senior center is defined by that building that was constructed in nineteen eighty-nine, which moved the library from our downtown to a centralized space with plenty of parking, not walkable, though. In the thirty years since then, the Book Barn has come to define the books in downtown, and I looked on the town website, they inventory one-hundred-and-seventy thousand books in our town library. I asked the Book Barn what they count for the books downtown, without a library, and their volume count was over five-hundred thousand books, and it was an old count, that she thought six-hundred thousand books are down there. So, to me, it was, it was a good illustration of some of the unintended consequences, you know, of moving these big chess pieces, the senior center down, and to me, the library, I don't miss, I like the Book Barn. The senior center, though, I think misses taking advantage of the services that come with the Main Street, that come with, you know, our downtown.
And so, basically, what you're doing for transporting of seniors is you're driving them to doctor's appointments. There's now a big demand for service to Old Saybrook, for the new medical building run by Yale.
Oh, interesting.
So, we've got people that have doctors, have visits, they want to go to New London, then you've got another percentage of the population, they want to go to Old Saybrook, and we're now reaching a level of, a portion of our population that is not in a condition to be driving themselves.
Okay, right.
So...
I know, I, I mean, just on the state level, I know that we could look into a livery service as an option, I know that there are folks who are, like, through, through the state, I know, they get transport to methadone clinics, and taxi company, a taxi service literally picks them up and provides that livery service, and that's all they do, all day long.
But somebody has to pay for that.
Yes, there is an expense, and the state of Connecticut does pay, they're the ones paying for that contract with that company, but, yeah, the, I mean, it's just a means for them to, I don't know.
Well, let me speak with the senior coordinator about that.
I would have no idea what that costs, but...
Well, now, here's another thing that's getting, that's in the mix, which I think also has some impact on... Well, now, here's another thing that's getting, that's in the mix, which I think also has some impact on planning. As you have areas of town where it's suggested that this would be appropriate for affordable housing. And one of those things is that there needs to be access to public transportation. Ridership has been very, very low with seat transportation. And it's costing us a large amount of money. And there is talk about redefining that district that, that we're in and that we might lose the service. Now, right now, we have maybe on a regular day, eight passengers in a full-size bus. And so it's not cost-effective. And certainly not very energy efficient. But if we're thinking in terms of this aging population and a non-driving population, without that as an accessory form of transportation. For instance, to go shopping or go wherever you might want to, that may soon become unavailable.
But I will also mention to you, I'm sorry, that there are an awful lot of seniors that do not know about the bus route, where to pick it up.
Exactly.
Exact, they, they really, there's no knowledge.
No signage and there's no weather protection. I have people coming constantly asking me where the bus stops and when it stops, I have absolutely no idea.
No idea.
That's why it's not getting used.
Good point.
Well, and also I think the second reason is that everybody's very busy. And nobody has three-fourths of the day, or most people, three-fourths of the day, to use a bus that's gonna pick you up at eight fifteen in the morning and not return until four o'clock in the afternoon.
That's a good point.
You know, so we have infrequent runs, which also adds a problem.
As I personally experienced this afternoon, I lost my keys, I left them in Cafe Soul and I was carless. And without adequate public transportation, I, I was left to, can I get a ride back home to get my other set of keys? So, that, you know, I'm not saying now, if I had adequate public transportation, maybe I wouldn't even need to bring my vehicle and I could just commute to work. I live ten minutes away, so with that mind, I mean.
You could be walking.
Ten minutes by a car. But I could be riding a bike, which is viable.
One thing I, Roseanne, I really appreciate your suggestion to bring in the superintendent. And I think as the planning commission, it's critical that we get the best information on what is trending in town. Based on the census, there are two numbers that I've been watching. One is the youth enrollment in our schools, which over the past ten years was down thirteen percent. This was two thousand, two thousand and ten. And our over sixty-two population, which in the same interval of two thousand to two thousand and ten, I believe, went up forty-seven percent. So, to me, those are the two moving parts in town. And I want to piggyback on the idea about bringing the superintendent in and complement it with inviting somebody who can speak to us about what that aging in place. Impact on our town is gonna be, so maybe Kathy Wilson or.
I think that would.
Is she the best resource?
I think that would be, and I can make that arrangement with her too, because that happens to be my ex officio too.
Yeah, I've, I've met with Katz, Kathy before and I've been very impressed and she's.
We're very fortunate to have her.
And why leave, so you should be impressed.
And we should get, and we should get her whole honest opinion on what, we've gotta be five years ahead of, you know, conditions on the ground, so.
I agree.
Where all the baby boomers now are getting to be sixty-five and sixty-eight.
And they're demanding.
And they're demanding a lot of stuff. There you are.
Well, it's gonna, like I said, it's gonna change the character of our town. And we gotta be real about that and make sure that we.
They're equal taxpayers as well.
That's right, but there was a, just to side note all of this, there was a great article in the Boston newspaper last week about Niantic.
I saw that.
They wrote this entire.
I saw that.
I mean, what they said about the town was just incredible and what a great place this is. And something like from Boston to come here to, this is what they're writing about, actually made a point that this is where they should be. Or this is where they should visit.
Mm-hmm.
And come spend their time, it was just an incredible lot of it.
And I, and I would emphasize in particular, Niantic.
That's where they did, Niantic.
They didn't say Flairs is being.
No, they didn't, they said Niantic, it was all Niantic.
Yeah, yeah, very much so.
And that was the headline.
Okay, I have two other things, cause I know it's getting late.
We've got all that.
Uh, one, one was, was the issue that Frank brought up about the affordable housing and the inventory. We never will achieve ten percent, never. It's an impossibility. Because if they only have to give thirty percent affordable housing, they're adding seventy percent. So, the formula is impossible to ever achieve. The only places that even come close are your big cities.
Right.
And we have, I have kept the real estate listings for the past six months as they appear in the paper. We have many, many homes every week that are selling, that are in the category of affordable housing. And you can't count them as part of your inventory because they aren't new units.
Interesting.
So, the formula itself is quite flawed.
And I, I'd like to add to that, what blew my mind was when we were researching and I was reading the Affordable, Affordable Housing Report that's in our appendix to our P O C D. It said that twenty-seven percent of Eastline residents qualify for affordable housing. Now, that wasn't a number I was prepared to see, I thought it was like ten percent of the population. No, living here right now, paying what they're paying, twenty-seven percent would qualify. So, it's, yeah, substantial character of our town.
Oh, and I wanted to say one other thing about the enrollment, and that what is interesting is that using the high school figures, twenty-four students left the school district. Now, not, not counting the graduates of course, but twenty-four students moved away someplace or decided to go to some other school. And we picked up forty-eight new students. So, we also have to take into consideration the effect of all of these charter schools that are being created and the magnet schools. And that a number of students from the middle school are choosing to not go to the high school, but are choosing to go to New London, to the science and math magnet school. So, increasingly, a number of choices available to them, which they didn't have before. And that probably, that will begin to figure into our enrollment figures as well. But the point is, if you're only losing four students, it's negligible. Four students out of a whole school. Even if you're losing twenty-four students, it's still negligible because it's spread over four or five grades. And you still have to pay for that teacher.
Right.
Okay, my last thing, yes, I am getting to the end. But remember that I sa, I saved time, I stored time from two previous meetings.
Okay, unload.
I banked it. Tonight's discussion on the roadway with the map that Mr. Gashell presented to you. I asked particularly for the date on that. And the reason is that this was a topic of discussion at the Commission of Natural Resources. Now, Commission of Natural Resources for this roadway and the redesign of ninety-five has expressed in more than one letter to D O T. That this is very fragile land, it's on our aquifer. And our borders are aquifer. And what kind of mitigating things are they going to put in to the plan to avoid an oil spill? Which would contaminate our water supply. So, here's, here's the question, here's the little short memo that is sent as a follow-up to some earlier correspondence, sent by a member of the Commission of Natural Resources. I'm wondering two things. First, has a hazardous spill containment mitigation system to protect our aquifer been designed into the exit seventy-four reconstruction plan? Secondly, where may I get a copy of these plans? In an earlier message, you mentioned that the reconstruction will first need all necessary permits. But that didn't clearly answer my question. If you were able to send the plans as an attachment, that would help, many thanks. Response. At this time, we are negotiating a contract for a design firm. Just beginning the negotiation. The design is a zero percent, is at zero percent completed. This is memo is dated September ninth.
I wonder what that costs.
Dated September ninth. We have a concept drawing only. And that concept drawing was submitted by the developers. That concept works with improvements that are currently envisioned, envisioned by the developer. And there's a little more to it that really doesn't matter, but attached is a PDF of that preliminary con, concept. I could not get that to print out from my computer. But it nearly cle, needs to be clearly understood that it is only a concept. There has been no public vetting, nor has there been any detailed engineering develop, drawings developed. And there says nothing more than a concept and it should not be perceived or portrayed as anything other than that. We are building the project to all applicable standards for design and permitting. And no, we are not including a system of spill, hazardous spill containment or any kind of a mitigation system. I believe that it is upon us to insist that that happens. And to do that, we need a response from planning, we need a response from zoning, the Natural Resources Commission. I think that this, here is an opportunity for us to correct a very serious flaw. In a highway that was designed in nineteen fifty-eight, when we weren't aware of our aquifer. And we weren't aware, you know, and as Art Carlson has said to you several times in presentations, we forget about it because we don't see it. It's not like Lake Canomac. We walk on it, we drive on it, we build on it, and we forget that it's there. So, I think that this is something that we really, really need to get on top of and make it known. I have asked to meet with Representative Jutilla, I have yet to call, contact Senator Farmica, but I know that, I know that he's aware of this and that this is something that's of concern. And so I would like to suggest that you put this on your agenda for, perhaps next meeting is too, too busy. But that you consider drafting a letter to support what the Commission of Natural Resources is trying to do.
Certainly, certainly, I'm embarrassed actually that we were talking all about those four ramps and no one said anything about the aquifer, which is, of course, I think correctly.
Joan talks about it all the time. But the spill response teams, I mean, fire departments are trained for things like that and that's a, I don't know, road construction. I guess you can build things into a road that like retention basins and.
Exactly, this should be included in the design. Right, you respond, but the spill has already happened. You know, we should be, there, there are methods that are available, if you're gonna rip up the roadway anyway.
Containment, mitigation methods.
Right, and there's a, and, and it's not a boogeyman, it's not something abstract. There is a documented crash of diesel fuel miles from that. And we got lucky in that it dumped into the Niantic River and was flushed out with tides. But if it was a hundred and, or I should say, sixty seconds sooner on the highway up the road, it would have been right in our aquifer.
Thank you, thank you all for your hard work and perseverance.
Thanks for going the distance with us, Roseanne.